Okay, we're going to call this special meeting on the City Council to order. And we'd like to be on top of our thinking in good shape. Thank you all for coming. We need to do a little bit of formal business. So we'll let the record show that all council members except for councilmember Burrows are present. And so that's the little call. We will not be doing a bunch of religions. I don't see any flags. So we will move on to our items tonight. So this session is something that hit about if we're looking at what we're facing in the coming years, for that matter, particularly this last year helping from the state legislature, bills related to housing that will affect our ability to plan or at least affect development that will occur in our city. And there's a lot to go over. We're going to break this up into kind of three pieces. First will be bills of interest to Lafayette and have been forwarded to the government for signature. So this is things that are going to be part of our requirements for coming years. The second segment will be other housing bills that were not tracked but were worth review. So these are bills that are in the process. You won't pay any close attention because it didn't see an direct effect, but we should be aware of those. And then the last is going to be two-year bills. These are bills that were carried over from the first year of session into the second year of session and will be considered in 2020. And there are a few bills there that we talked about and they were interested in that in fact became two-year bills. So those will be gone over also detail. One of the things that I think you're going to begin to see as this process tonight unfolds, legislative efforts are complex. They're busy team. They're very bureaucratic. They have methodologies there that are not understandable by anyone except for those who are, well, the lobbyists understand. And so with that, we segue to the nunchucks. We will be led by Allison Ryan, our City Attorney, who is here with us. We also have Casey Elliott, who's the State Capitol Director for Towns and Public Affairs, Casey, and Alex Garrett, who's a Senior Associate for Towns and Public Affairs. So they'll really be making the presentation going with all the items. They're going to understand the language in terms of things like two-year bills, government debt, you know, paying now, you get something later, all that stuff. And to be quite frank with you, it's really been Towns' assistance to the city plus the help of our state senators, Niklaa, and our Senate Member Rebecca Barakaham, that has allowed us to kind of get some people into items that are moving through the process now. And my say too that if they help us again and go forward in the coming years, it's essential that we get both engaged and have contact with legislative representatives to affect what comes through the process. It's not easy, but it's important to do this work. Just so you know, your council members here are Vice Mayor Susan Candell, Councilmember Teresa Guerra, Councilmember Stephen Bliss, and Kenny Bliss, I believe is in London right now, working, I'm sure. Yes, okay. He's watching. He's watching. Okay. With that, we basically will have the presentation by Mala and our lobbyists. We will then have an opportunity for the council to ask questions of the City Attorney and the lobbyists that occurred as each section tomorrow was discussed. Then we'll have open comments, three minutes each, much like the council meeting, at the end of the presentation. So you'll all get a chance to both ask questions or make comments about circumstances that were in. And also, we will wrap up at the end with some discussion about future, which actually is really critical so we understand what's coming at us and we have to prepare for in the next few years and what would be a logical thing to do to actually have the most effect. And after that, we'll jump. So with all of that, I introduce you to your City Attorney, Allison Ryan. Take your time.
Thank you, Mayor. My um. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So we're going to review this package show of thirty-three lines. There were twenty-seven hundred bills that were introduced in charge last session. Two hundred of those bills focused on housing. The reviews is that I'm only going to talk about fifteen. So that's a quality bill. This is what I'm going to tell you about tonight in terms of the fifteen bills. Do you want me to play this attention to you? So the reason that so much is focused on housing is that there's a two-and-a-half billion dollar annual shortfall in the Bay Area to address their local housing crisis. So of these fifteen bills, there's going to be four major themes you're going to hear me cover for kind of what we talked about. One is affordable housing. Two is streamlining of development review. You'll see a consistent shortening of the review period that I'll talk about. The city is going to be faced with increased recording requirements, and that's obvious you're going to see the continual erosion of control. And the council is very well aware of that, which I think is why they can't delay hiring councilmen to advocate on what they have to do with these issues and somehow today set possible shape some of these bills. So we can jump in. As Mayor announced, there are nine bills that were bills of interest that were very closely followed and advocated on the city's behalf. The first nine I'm going to talk about in greater detail. The second module are these additional bills that have some import to the city Lafayette and Oaxaca. And then the third module, the last three bills are two-year bills that are going to be continued over to the next session that are still interested in the city that will have to close the launch and launch. So three of those nine bills dealt with accessory dwelling units. There was a significant overhaul to accessory dwelling law. This happened several years ago as well. You had to upgrade all ordinance significantly. I think after this session, after those law ordinance, again, they probably made some significant updates. So every bill does, it provided that ADUs may be attached to, located within an attached log, storage area, or an accessory structure. It compressed the minister of approval of the unit process. It used to be a hundred and twenty days if those are existing silicon wall or multi-family dwelling on the property. Now it's sixty days. If a garage was demolished and an ADU is constructed, you cannot require a replacement of parking spaces. In addition, the city cannot require them on lot sizes. The city must commit at least an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU, sixteen feet in height, with four-foot style and no setbacks. If there is potentially a maximum square footage requirement, it has to be no less than eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet for the ADU if there's more than one bedroom in the ADU, and that comes up to a thousand square feet. There cannot be a setback requirement for an accessory structure that's in the same location with the same dimensions as an existing structure that's converted to an ADU. You can see all of these provisions are trying to make it easier to construct ADUs. Another big change that many cities did, many cities required that the ADU be overoccupied until January first of 2025. That is not, that no longer allowed. They did allow the rental restrictions so that if the city would like, it could require that the units be rented for longer than thirty days. So you can avoid that scenario with a MIRDP that's hunted out for just a couple of days at a time. In addition, the city can't issue a certificate of occupancy on an ADU before it issues a primary residence. This presumes that the primary residence and ADU are being constructed at the same time. It also reduces the way you collect impact fees. So if an ADU is seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet or less, it cannot charge an impact fee. If it was larger than seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, then the impact fee needs to be proportional to the primary unit. So I suspect we see the ADUs that are seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet or less just to take advantage of this impact fee prohibition. In addition, there are any of the recent violations that occur enforcement, so maybe for five years if they're not necessary to protect public health and safety. You'll see HCD has a lot of teeth in the air to forward noncompliance of the city to the Attorney General. And so this provision says that HCD can modify the Attorney General if the city has compliance of state law and is not, is a ordinance compliance state law. So that's the eight, that was three of the nine bills. So I'm moving at a fast, but this is eighty-fourty-seven. This is the genesis of Bay Area Regional Housing Finance Act. This was in the news, right? It creates a Bay Area Finance Authority. And the purpose of the finance authority is to raise and administer and allocate funding for affordable housing whilst preserved, to create new affordable housing and tenant protection. The Bay Area is considered the nine counties. Again, the this finance authority is going to be MTC, and it will be able to impose taxes and issue bonds. There's a lot of debate about who is going to receive the funds, and it depends on what type of tax or fee is imposed. So if it is a personal tax or special tax, eighty percent of the funds will go back to the county of origin, and then that will be distributed for a county expenditure plan. Twenty percent of those funds will go back originally, so anywhere over the nine counties based on regional expenditure plan. If the tax ends up being a special tax imposed based on the number of police, then it's going to be a fifty-fifty ratio. Fifty percent goes back to the county of origin and fifty percent goes to the region based on those specific expenditure plans. And then if it's a commercial linkage fee, that ABAG is the one who can impose. If ABAG imposes this commercial linkage fee, it's going to get distributed to each city and county based off of that study. So it will depend which fee gets imposed, and that will depend on how it happens to distribute it as well as the regional expenditure plan. SB five is a affordable housing and community development investment program. It creates a state community for which the city can apply for funding for affordable housing, infrastructure, and economic development projects that are supported by city policies. The funding source is tax increment financing, which is the probably the only summary to create redevelopment audits was that also will have tax increment finance. So that's going to be an extra source of potential funding we've used for projects. SB two sixty-eight, loads the out measures and local taxes, and it allows certain tax numbers and tax measures or tax measures that have different rates as well as the issuance of bonds to include a statement in the road guide to see, to go to road guide for more tax rate information rather than being required to provide that detailed tax rate information in the out language. SB three forty-three, we're going to spend a little bit of time on this one. This was a significant bill called Housing Places Act of 2019. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how we kind of react as it currently exists because the legislative system makes some significant changes to the housing of the act. So I want to give you a little bit, and I mean, you probably know that or have heard me speak about it, give a little bit of a primer on it so you understand what this system provides for. The Housing and Climate Act currently provides that a city cannot disapprove or conditionally approve a project, a housing project, in a manner that makes that project infeasible to affordable housing or within such charges unless certain specific findings are made. The findings are called the specific adverse impact findings, and it's very detailed and requires the city to find that there's a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety, and there's no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or agree to adverse impact without rendering development unaffordable. So this is all from the existing law. In addition, when it's not an affordable housing project and it is just a standard housing development project, and when I said housing development project, it's projects that qualify on residential units, mixed-use projects where at least two-thirds of the square footage is residential and then transitional and supportive housing. Those are the type of projects that are all affordable housing under the Housing Calendarity Act. So if a project complies with objective general plans, some standards, subdivision standards, and designer use standards, then the city cannot deny the project unless it meets that same specific adverse impact finding that I've just mentioned. One of the big changes is, you can see, at the time that preliminary application is submitted, it previously was deemed complete, and a city would deem complete an application after it received submittal information that it required, review that submittal information, and then if you make a determination that the application is deemed complete. The Housing Places Act of 2019 now provides for preliminary application submittal, and there's specific requirements in the law, and if that affirmation has been submitted, that's the preliminary application, and that's going to be the date that creates the cutoff for when these objective standards need to be in place. And so that's how the significant change that occurred in addition until January one of 2025. Housing projects can only be subject to the general plan, specific plan, designer review standards, ordinances, policies, mitigation fees, and standards that were in effect when that application was submitted. So if the project is subsequently realized significantly, and what I mean significant means twenty percent increase in square footage or twenty percent increase in units, then you can apply new standards. But all of the old standards that were in effect when that project was submitted and that's preliminary application, I just referenced, are going to be locked into place. So what this city does for the city is it limits its fees because it's only locking in all the fees that we can put on a project once that preliminary application is submitted. A development has two enough years to begin construction on the project, and it's not subject to any new fee except CECL fees and CPI uses to existing fees. In addition, one of the big changes is that until January one of 2025, the city can only conduct five hearings on a project if the project complies with applicable objective standards at the time the application is deemed complete. I see a lot of commissioners and auditors. I think a lot of, you know, we have a very nuanced commission process, review process. So I'll give you an example that we could have of what a project may need to go to PTR for review, transfer for review, designer review commission, planning commission, and our time to meet to come to council, even not on appeal. If we went to each of those bodies for one meeting, we'd get off five hearings. So something we're going to have to consider as part of this is that we may need to do joint hearings so that we don't trigger multiple hearings by reporting to all the various bodies that we have, particularly in Lafayette since we have so many commissions that we typically want to review these housing projects. In addition, when we continue, a matter over to another hearing, that's going to be counted as a second hearing. So that's something we consider too. So we may need to block out all the periods of time or special meetings for projects in order to make sure that we can encompass a lot of that in that one hearing. In addition, the Housing Places Act of 29 provides that if an application is deemed incomplete, the city has to provide exhausted lists of items that are not complete, and any subsequent review can't be made new access. It can compress the timeframe for a city to take action. It hasn't accounted for the year. The city had a hundred and twenty days for the certification of the EIR to approve or disapprove of a project. Now it's ninety days. And if a project has a significant component of low or very low income housing, if it has forty-nine percent of that project being of low or very low affordability, then instead of the ninety days, it's take action from certification of the EIR, it's compressed to sixty days. So again, we have expedited review process that we're going to continue to see as we discuss this. This is also a very significant change under the Housing Places Act is where housing is an allowable use. The city cannot enact development policies, standards, or conditions that have any of the effects that I'm going to describe. It's a law of progress. So the first one is the city can't change the general plan or specific plan when use designation or zoning parcels for less intensive use, reduce the intensity of the use that was in effect as of January one of 2018. The city can't read some of the other parcels if there is a low net loss. So that's something we've been able to do before. The city can't enforce a warrant other than to specifically protect against an imminent threat to the health and safety of persons residing in or within the immediate vicinity of the area subject to more harm. Further, if the city does enforce more harm, it can't be enforced until it's approved from HCD. This is another big one. The city can't change the standard after January first of 2020 that are not objective. The city has been very aware of the need to change the standard, so it's very far ahead, I think, of other cities. We would have adopted a phase-one designer review process of objective standards, and we're very close to implementing and adopting a phase-two designer review standard that will come back before the council before January one of 2020. So I think we've developed that, we're in a good position because the city's been working on that for quite some time. The city can't limit the number of land use approvals or permits. It can't cap on housing because it can be approved and can't limit the population. So now we're going to move to eighty-fourteen eighty-two. This is a number that has got a lot of presence in the Tenant Protection Act of 2019. There are two components to this act. One deals with rent caps, that is probably what we've heard more about in the news, and the other component is the tenant protection provisions. And with the tenant protection provisions, a property owner cannot terminate a lease without just cause, but the tenant has occupied the residential property for twelve months. This only applies to residential property. So just cause, examples of that just cause include, this is not exhaustive because there's quite a long list in the act, but some little classic examples of failure to payment, a material breach of your lease agreement, creating some sort of nuisance on the property, those would be considered just cause. The property owner's a party for notice for curable just cause eviction, and this one is another big one, and it's a no-fault just cause termination. The property owner is required to pay the tenant one month's rent or waive the latter month's rent. The property owner can choose which one he wants to do, and this obligation applies regardless of the income of the tenant. And a no-fault just cause termination, an example would be if the property owner wants to take the property off the rental market, or if the property owner wants people who would like to move into the property, or their immediate family member would like to move into the property, those would be examples of no-fault just cause terminations. If a city has a local ordinance that they adopted before September one that's more protected, that would apply instead of this bill. There are several exceptions that apply and qualify for this. The big one, I would say, is if you received a certificate of occupancy for your project in the last fifteen years. So more current projects are not going to be subject to these provisions. The rent increases are prohibited. A property owner can't increase rent by more than five percent plus the cost of living or ten percent, whichever is lower. So an example would be if cost of living is three percent, the mass of property owner could increase the rent is the five percent plus three percent, which is eight percent. And cost of living goes up significantly. Let's say it's a seven percent cost of living, so if a property owner wanted to add a five plus seven, it'd get to twelve percent, they would cap that to ten percent. So the highest it could ever be is a ten percent increase. This applies to all residential rent increases as of March fifteenth of 2019, and this provision isn't in fact until January one of twenty-third. How is eighty-fourteen eighteen five, it's an update to SB thirty-five. SB thirty-five, if you recall, was a streamlining provision that allows certain projects to have significantly expedited review. And so what this does, an update to SB thirty-five, for the Bay Area, it creates another way to qualify for this expedited review. So a project that maybe needs twenty percent of its units to moderate income, but a city has not had its above-moderating income arena, will now qualify for this expedited review. In order to qualify, at least two-thirds of the project needs to be for residential uses, and it cannot include underground space such as a parking garage or a basement. This provision also creates an exemption to CECL for art when art leases conveys or covers the name that it owns related to a development approved using a streamlined affordable project process. I think at this point, we've now covered the first nine bills, that first module that the mayor mentioned that were closely tracked and advocated on what they have. So I think at this point, if the presidents from the council were having to take them, they're not going to be into the second module.
We're going to need you guys to come on.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we can't just see where we are. Do we have any questions?
I do.
Okay. That's what we can do.
Hi, thank you. Wow, that's great. So questions was fast. On fourteen eighty-seven, I don't know what a commercial linkage fee is. Okay, we'll get it back by the next study. That was like a lot of the original one of those sentences, and maybe other people don't understand it.
Yes, so it's ABAG who actually hold the details. ABAG is the one who gets to potentially impose it, and...
So what is a commercial linkage fee? So basics.
Yeah, they can impose it on commercial development, and they're going to take a, oh, it has a specific cap on how it should then impose. Give me one second, and I'll pull it. It is a ten dollars. Yeah, it's a ten dollars per square foot cap, and it's going to be imposed on commercial development within the Bay Area. Can we adjust it as a PR? Okay, I see. It is an exemption that is established for broad class of projects in connection with approval for commercial development regarding affordable and additional housing needs. So it's functionally the commercial development and upgrading the need for housing, and the linkage between the commercial development and the housing is where we're going to apply it for the tenant per square foot fee. So it's only on redevelopment, and it's only if we decide the voters to pass a tax business whether they do it. This one is not all available, but this one, ABAG, is going to decide if they're going to want to establish it.
What we're working on, which is, is it's a long-term fee that the redevelopment will pay, but where the language was ultimately written is essentially making it as an impact fee, so the next study has to be done, which will determine the appropriate amount of the fee, which can't be more than ten dollars per square foot. They have that capital legislation. There was also a caveat put in there that the linkage fee cannot be assessed until voters approve one of the, so while the linkage fee itself doesn't require the approval, it can't be imposed until voters approve one of the other funding mechanisms.
So in the SB three third, another question. So no general plan specifically changes out of one-on-one, 2018. There's a low net loss. What was that? Is that, you know that earlier?
So typically, you can rezone property. So if you were a downzoned property in one area of the city, let's say, you know, for instance, we have a downtown area where we have higher densities permitted, and if you were to downzone that property, then you would need to use up other property to upzone it so that there's a development loss of density. So it would be permitted if you could find other property that you could upzone. You can't do it without creating a low net loss.
Great. One more. The fourteen eighty-two Tenant Act, there was a law protection in there. I'm assuming that applies to residential, that applies to all the apartments in Lafayette too, or no?
Not the newer ones, because if you were issued a certificate of occupancy in the last fifteen years, you can be exempt.
Wait, citizen, wasn't it?
So the newer apartments that were created, that were issued certificates of occupancy in the last fifteen years, would be the ones that were approved, let's just say, approved except for, approved within the last fifteen years, basically ten protections wouldn't apply. So all the apartments in Lafayette, I know a lot of those.
Correct. Okay, all right. Okay, assumption. Thank, thank you. Okay, that's it.
Quick questions. So there are a lot of little questions, not half questions, a fifteen-year... So there are a number of little questions, non-cat questions, 15-year exemption, as I understand it, that lasts, in other words, it's not an exemption back to 15 years from now and everything, it moves from, it moves from here every year, right? So there's always a 15 to look back, it's not going to go back to 2004.
Yeah, because the exemption is valid, it doesn't trigger permitting.
Got it, right, okay. As Brad was asking, I was going to be asked about the Nexus, the commercial industry and the Nexus study. He said, I just wanted, I don't know, we have this detail handy, but I'm curious about the administration of that, so if it does, if it is often approved, that you can do that sort of type of fee, the assessing law would be the regional authority, right? So they didn't run, that's curious about any types of incumbents that could replace the policy. So for example, I've seen the regional entity has policies that actually fund the Nexus study, so we would be able to, is that safe for the Senate?
Yes, I think that's correct. I think we may be on the hook if they create a fee that's actually requiring the condition of approval.
And then, does the regional authority, the Nexus study, would assume any sort of investment of city staff time, and helping with the Nexus studies, if it's a day that might have to take place? I'm just trying to get a sense of that, so incumbents might be upon the city, if it can be that much support.
Yeah. In general, the authority is going to be hiring and utilizing MTC staff for the carrying out activities, so this was the discussions with the legislature, it was not anticipated that individual cities would be the ones conducting the issues, but it would be kind of the region-wide HCD, you know, study on a single fee, so it's not like...
Bow them, please.
Not like there would be a fee in Lafayette, a different fee in Water Creek, a different fee, or that, they're trying to get one uniform, you know, region-wide fee. So now, all of that Nexus study, presumably would be contracted out for MTC staff, as opposed to local authorities.
Yes, just one last question, is, um, next to SB 3, so I understand the requirement of applying public hearings as an maximum, and so obviously that goes to sort of the ability of municipalities to filter that and to understand particular projects. So would study sessions be considered a public hearing on their SB 3, because they use frequently them? Or...
Yeah, to the extent, for instance, I'll give you an example, when we had a study session recently for a project that hadn't applied, it's boots across the street from the library, they hadn't applied, so that study session wouldn't have captured towards one of these five hearings. But if there was a study session after the application had been submitted, it would have captured towards the five.
Okay, then, kind of thinking about the way this SB 33 operations would be, would say that the application would be a preliminary application, not the complete application?
I'd like to look at that. That one, the deemed complete language is not that preliminary application that I had originally talked to you about, it's more the traditional deemed complete language, so it gives us a little bit more reading.
Okay, thanks. So, just continuing the questions on SB 33, the five meeting limits, maybe it's a real problem for us, there's no doubt about it. So is the language tight enough that even continuation of a meeting is considered a separate meeting, I've been getting hit on this one.
It's, yes, I think about that.
So once you convene a meeting, and then when it ends, whether people fall asleep, and automatically you end the meeting, and the next time you talk about it, it's a meeting?
Correct. Which is why I mentioned that we may want to have a special meeting just to deal with the high episode of time.
I agree with that, okay, so that's important. 1487, so this is a new entity, as I said, that's going to collect the money, and this really has to be put to a vote of the people in the region, the entire region, and then it is passed, I assume, two thirds for the Bay Area region, all nine counties, does that house on work?
Not necessarily. So language was included in 1487, so that a little, by the entities, to go out to a few of four counties. So it's a gap in the nine-county region. That said, if your county is not included, then obviously those taxes would, but if you're not included, it may be a regional step or whatever.
They kind of curate the area and then go for vote in that area, but it's county designation.
Correct.
You have minimum of four counties.
Correct.
Okay. But two thirds of those people in those four counties. Now, when they vote, are they going to be voting on the type of tax that will be levied, or is it just going to be giving authority, the ability to do any of those that you mentioned?
Yeah, no, it would be a specific tax proposal developed by the entities, so if it's a parcel tax, so they have their authorized group, and that would come to the voters as a regional parcel tax, for example, or business tax. So yeah, you would just be giving it, or then broadly to issue a tax, it would be on a specific tax.
And the city's role in the election process is what? We have no role, or do we have to?
Administration, I mean, presumably these would be consolidated with general elections, but they haven't really been administering, but the entity doesn't have any special election powers beyond what we can do with public agencies.
Okay. And one of the items we were thinking about was return to source, and that the source would be actually the cities, not the counties. Now, has it really been decided now, is it now the issue of city, return to source dead, or is it still possible again?
So the way that ended up in the final language is, everything is returned to accounting. So it's at a higher, so for parcel taxes, we have the head business taxes, it's at a higher percentage of those original data before, so I'm not saying it's an active county, but it's still at the county level. The offer was pretty persistent that if you wanted it to return to the county's laws, the cities could be working with their counties to develop an expenditure plan as to how that leaves an impact. If individual counties wanted to do a proportional share as to where the taxes are collected, they're eligible to, they could do that, but each county itself is given the discretion as to how that, in that case, 80% would be spent, or on the business side, 50%. So it's still up to each county. Yeah, there were a lot of conversations on return to cities, but for the offer of the bonus for various reasons, they would go over to the county.
Okay. And then that remaining 20% is for regional projects within that minimum four-county area. So who determines what those prices are going to be? Is it going to be the MTC ABAG group, or will it be the counties themselves?
Yeah, it'll be a further, like, yeah, broader, each county will have the charge of developing expenditure plan, there'll also be a regional expenditure plan, that I believe language says that can be done annually, another county, it's annually, I believe, that the local entity can do it annually as well, but it would be a broader idea, obviously being, particularly with the sub-subject, because the split is that the housing pressures may not necessarily be, you know, where the jobs are located, I mean, obviously if you're in a business, in San Francisco, the housing may not, you know, housing pressures may be improved, housing needs may. So that is at least the idea behind having a lower, having a higher regional number of, on that series of funding, that ultimately that would be up to the regional entity, which then would have to create a expenditure plan, which would then have to be for the ABAG and MTC.
But that regional entity would be for that minimum four-county area, so you could have several different four-county regional entities that are all working separately with different types of money that were actually allocated. I'm just, I'm just looking at the panel.
Yeah, I think ultimately the regional entity, if there's four counties involved in the election, or five, I think there'll just be one regional plan as opposed to multiple regional plans, it would just be kind of the one regional entity's expenditure plan for that, it would be part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wondering if my question did right now on that, after five years, the authority can decide that we need to change the distribution of the funding, so it may be demolished, if they don't think it's the best interest of the region, or it's currently proposed, that's something they can consider modifying after five years.
Okay, but in all these cases, the regional entity was MTC ABAG that caused, it's not something related to those four? Yeah, the four is a thing, because four counties don't work together, I mean, we don't do that, right? So it's really ABAG MTC who's doing it in San Francisco and making the decisions for that patch of the Bay Area.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember here.
So the change you gave, actually, that was my question, you tell me what you said. Oh, definitely, I will, thank you. So, back to the specific taxes that can come forward, and then going to the four counties, assuming that, actually, this would be it, so if the four counties go together and let it pass, and tax meters put on, parcel tax, a bond, business tax, are put on, then the RHP doesn't get activated, or that rule is not there until that first number passes, it doesn't matter what it is, that just needs to pass, and either if it's passing for the four counties, it provides them the ability to sign, it's too close, provides them the ability to implement the RHP throughout the nine counties? I don't remember getting into that, but it is, and, no, I'm going to give you another case, thank you. Other, other, the, I'm not a racist, you've read this different times, and I have lots of constituents who have access, they're like today, on information, completely, other, other, similar impact fees, linkage fees, other types of fees that that should use, that we don't have to go to the voters.
Yeah. So I'm divided on the question, now, I don't, if there's any additional fees that would be triggered by that. On your, on your other question, I see you have language referring, but I do not, I believe that the linkage fee cannot be assessed in a county unless that county has had a voting, has had a measure placed on it. So for the example that they would be these four counties for a parcel tax or bar, then there wouldn't really be the authorization to have to invite the linkage fee in those counties. Now, if another county was subject to be added, or measured, expanded beyond that, then the linkage fee can be assessed, but I'm pretty sure that the voters, yeah, have to prove before a linkage fee can be assessed.
Okay, and then, one question, Paul said that the after five years, the, there's a review, basically, of the funding application, so it would basically be that after five years, the authority decides that the percentages don't work, and then that new percentage of funding applies to all the counties that have been participating and have received those funds. Okay. And, I will, I have to back you on this too, are there, what's that oversight on this, and in terms of public engagement, and we're, I mean, we're going to have to continue to pay attention to it, but are there, we have that bottom that is a body of elected people representing our counties, is there another transparency accountability of oversight mechanism in the language? Actually, no, it's...
I mean, I need to get back to, like, the one thing I can say is that the entity is a public agency, so I mean, it's still hard to go through all the acts, and then you have all of the transparency issues that require any JPA or public agency, beyond that, there's some, there's some other power to put in on, through acts, and it's the only guy who can be the whole of the executive director, executive committee, which the presumed would be, would be subject to concession, but to be honest with you, there's anything further, further transparency requirements from the agency.
So those oversight mechanisms and accountability would probably go into the revenue measures, that in terms of this, for example, five-year change to the funding model, it's just, we have to pay attention in each shape that we're holding now, elected representatives accountable. There is a question, I know there seems that there, they don't belong to ABAG and MTC, what happens to those?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, it's just to think that, I mean, probably is.
Okay, other questions? Is there any questions, are there not? Okay, so I'm just going to, one more work on ADUs, that, you know, the impact fees are related, so I assume that it's also utility costs related to the other ones, and is that meaning that each utility is now unable to charge a fee, or recently can't collect that fee, it's still...
I think if it's still connected with the primary unit, then it can be, it can be charged, but otherwise, no.
Okay.
So is there's a connection to be associated with the, you know, the primary units being constructed at the same time?
If it's a, an ADU that's coming in place on existing...
No, there's existing single-family homes.
Right, and there's no impact fees, no utilities, no walkways, no, you know, safety, utility laws, all that, it's all a lot.
That, the walkway fees and all city impact fees would be taken off, which are 750 or fewer less. And if it was more than 750, it's a 750 or fewer proportion to the primary unit, so it's probably going to be fairly normal.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so we're done with our questions, we're going to move to the next one, questions from the public? Well, that's, that's, hold on, you did that, that's what I was going to try to get to. So the, I know the way this is written down, we're going to have questions at the end, but it would really, I think, be nice if we could do them as the modules go through, I'm just looking at the panel here. Are you okay with that? Because there's a lot more information, if folks are on whose track, of what exactly they're interested in.
We can only issue the three minutes for public comment, so if you're willing to allow people to ask potentially three minutes on the module, that's good.
Well, we, I don't, we'll have to pass a tax. Okay, so one of the questions, it was a public comment and question, three minutes, so just go in, and we'll start the clock. Actually, I just have some questions, not really far away.
Could you wait a minute? Oh, my name's Greg Mason, I'm on the planning commission. First question I have is regarding the ADUs. You stated that the certificate of occupancy for the ADU in the new construction have to be issued simultaneously. Question is, is there a work on, in my professional capacity, I spent one year doing all the fire, as an outside concern, all the funding, all the fire approvals were, every burnout house and school can be exclusive, like, several years, in the case of a fire or accident such as that, it charges only covers for two years. So in those cases, what they did was they would do the ADU first, because you could do that then, and then the half of it, and so workarounds around that, just, you know, planning commission, yours is...
Right. I'm not aware, I would have a chance to see if there's any exceptions that I can follow up on.
The second question relates to the rent control ordinances, and you refer to certificate of occupancy, and you use that in new, in new construction, but that can be triggered by certain remodels, works, and stuff like that, and what I didn't want, I wanted to make certain work explicit, because I didn't want to be put in a position where people were using that to get a loophole or workaround... want to be put in a position where people were using that to get a loophole or workaround an exemption for the rent control. So if somebody came in and they had to do a foundational upgrade, had to back up their house, that's a new CFO, guess what? They're not around the market for fifteen years.
I don't believe that's going to trigger, but I'm not sure how that level of specificity in the code, I think they're just certificate of occupancies.
So what, what happens? I mean, we, we have legislative codes, we're not really tuned into the details of what they're legislating on, I mean, in general. So how does this get resolved? I mean, is there...
I would turn to Alex and Casey, but typically, I would say it's resolved in future sessions when people start doing this. So Alex is saying, you know, we need clarification, right?
Yeah, I would say, generally speaking, as a, using, for example, the useless example, these bills are technically cleanup bills for the ADU legislation of the past three years ago, which was cleanup legislation for the ADUs in the past five years ago. So I would anticipate on things like rent control, like on 330, I know House of County Act, so for what I can say later, we are, we are, so I think that particularly with rent control, there's been discussions about, there was a state-wide issue prior, there's been discussions about additional state-wide issues. So I think on these budget issues, maybe that level of specificity, now from a legislature's perspective, this bill started out as something to stop rent spiking, not necessarily rent control, which they differentiate between. So they weren't necessarily trying to protect against every conceivable scenario, just those that really resulted in either tenant displacement or several significant increases in rent, which might be deemed unjustified.
But then you have the ban of house of construction, and of course, that is going to be...
And then, yeah, I think that's part of the reason, in 330, there's tenant displacement language that was put in, in the rent control, I think part of the reason that they put in, rent was covering the final front of rent, or another one is to try to discourage some displacements, turnover, also a lot of the dates that went into effect, as just was mentioned earlier, are for this year, so we could kind of avoid a rush of property owners at the end of the year, moving people out of the four, things to include that, Jim.
And then just one last question. From SB 330 and various old ADUs where fees are locked in at the time, what's the fiscal look at on the city of Lafayette? Because we self-contract out a lot of private services to the county. So it's not so much that we're giving fees, we're paying somebody else, knowing who are taking it.
That's a very discussion. I mean, I think it would, they, they've really done a good effort in locking those fees down. And so they typically are the impact fees that I would need to look at, if it also applies to, I think, considering the processing fees. I think I am hopeful that we can still charge, but we are actually like, being charged so that we're not functionally susceptible to some of these projects.
And specific, special just like these?
It's a, it's a bar of fees.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for those questions. Would you like us to ask a quick comment, one more? Scott, do you just scan your exercise or tell us? You can watch out, it's mine, I think.
Any day. I have three, I have three. And then we could go from there. One is, which show is it that allows the more than just one ADU, single town residential law? That's one. Another is, can you explain how employee tax works that has been discussed with 1487? And, and number three is the, can you clarify, would you say again whether or not four, if the outmeasure passes in four counties, does it apply to the rest of the counties? No? It's only applies to those four counties. Well, that's, that makes something refreshing. Could you respond to the other two?
So I think that was, how does it, how does the tax get imposed on employees?
That was one, it was a PR tax, an employee tax that was included in that very long bill, and they didn't reword it. And, and, yeah.
Hopefully, you do.
It was, yeah. For a single-family residential.
Yeah, I wanted to bring those together, so I would need to double-check to see which of the three it was in. But I mean, it's one of the three that is there.
Yeah. And that did pass, so that one, ABAG, could go up to a single-family residential, I think it's sorry.